Hello, everyone. It is now 7:00 PM, so the Monday, June 4th, 2018, meeting of the Pembroke Board of Selectmen will now begin. Please be advised that this meeting is being made available on live television on Comcast Channel 15, and any comments will be recorded for future airing.
We need to hold the bag.
We'll start with the federalities.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have a public service announcement from Chief Wall, William Boyle, and Robert DiMarzo. Thank you for coming in.
Good evening. So we wanted to kind of fill in a public a little bit about the sign campaign that's going around Pembroke. And I'm sure if you paid attention, you probably saw all the signs with the numbers on it and the problem that was out there last week. So that idea was to get people's broader awareness to the opioid crisis that we have going on in Pembroke, Plymouth County, and in the state of Massachusetts. And we purposely didn't put an explanation on it. We wanted to gather a little chatter and get people's juice to swallow a little bit about what's going on with this, what is the problem, and what do we do to solve it. It was a citizens initiative. Bob DiMarzo came to me and wanted to know what we could do, and we had his idea of other signs and kind of rambled it, and Bob spearheaded this, working with the Chamber of Commerce. He secured the funding through the generous donations of several benefactors in town. It was really easy. And the ideas came pretty easy, but the facts are out there. Unfortunately, we've had people die from overdoses, and we've had a lot of reversed overdoses, but that's a problem. So we wanted to get the word out. So created a Facebook page. It's facebook.com/pembroksigns. And we're trying to put as much information out there as we can with the Plymouth County Outreach, with PTAD, and with a lot of the groups, the Hopes, the Chaos Groups, and all the other people out there that really have firsthand knowledge of crises and overdoses, family issues, recovery, treatment options. And so that's where we're going. I guess I've said my piece.
It's amazing how many people have come up to me that have had or have been touched somehow by opioid problem or abuse, and it's not just even the state, it's the country. For those of you that don't do Facebook, a little explanation of the numbers. The first number of the 26 was the number of overdoses in Pembroke, and the four was the number of deaths in 2017. And on the other side was the number of overdoses in Plymouth County, which I think is 1500 or something, and 174 in the Plymouth County of deaths. So basically, every two weeks, there was an overdose in this town, and every three months, somebody died. It's a problem, and we have a good group, Pembroke Titans, doing a great job educating the youth, and we need to just keep spreading the message, and we'll look at the website.
Yeah, and just, you know, as part of the chamber, Bob came to us to let us know, you know, what he's thinking of doing. I guess several years ago, when trunk driving was obviously a major issue, the chamber instituted a similar sign campaign. And again, it's all about raising awareness, and this is more about putting business aside and really putting the community first, to say, how can we help, you know, the kids of the community? And not just kids, but it affects everybody. Addiction doesn't discriminate against age, against social class, really against anybody. So for us as a business community, to get behind this initiative, to get the businesses to put up the signs, to get even just regular citizens to make people wear this as well, we're obviously happy to help in every capacity and hope that this makes a difference, you know, in every way possible. So, thank you, gentlemen, for being a big part. Bob, and obviously Chief Wall, of, you know, really now how this is snowballing into other communities.
And that was kind of the idea. You know, our goal was to put out, I think, 80 signs, 80 different places. So you've got 80 more people working with you that have an understanding of what's going on, 80 people that have an idea of where to go if there's an issue, if somebody asks them, hey, what's this sign all about? What's this, you know, where do I go to get information? And that's the idea. I mean, it's more than that. There's treatment options out there. There are people that have made successful recoveries. The numbers are probably on the light side. I've had some people argue, I think there's been more overdoses and everything, and are they correct? Those numbers are based on what the medical examiner says this is cause of death. And there may be other factors and other deaths and everything else. So you're on the low side, which makes it even worse. So, you know, we all need to do what we can do, and we need to get it out in the open. We need people to talk about it, and we need to have places that they can go to get the help that they need, because that's what it's all about, treatment, recovery. We want success stories, and we want the numbers to be zero. And when we get to that, there'll be plenty of signs out there saying it's zero, and we hope we get there someday. Thank you very much.
You actually have the fire chief here, too, if you'd like to say something to...
I would agree with Rick, and I think the members of local service, which my home standpoint, which my creed tells, we're from the law, so on the, of our residents, has a concern for this disease in other towns, too. So, it affects our community greatly. Unfortunately, we see these customers.
Well, gentlemen, thanks. Thank you for your work, and hopefully it helps. I believe the awareness is a great part of this, this problem, and I'd like to know how we can help as a board. And if you don't know that right now, please keep in contact with us. We recognize the issue. We recognize that it's a great problem, not just in our community, but the county, the state, and if there's anything we can do as a board to help, we're willing to do so.
I think one of the easiest things to do is just be familiar with where the treatment programs are, how to get people involved, where the outreach clinics are, because once a week, you know, in Bridgewater and Plymouth, there's outreach, and there's people from every walk of life, any kind of recovery, that are there, support groups, and they're available, person to person. So if you know somebody that's got a problem, and somebody asks you, so where do I go, or what do I do, you can point them in the right direction. Sometimes that's all it takes. It's pretty simple.
I want to thank you, Chief Wall, actually, because like I've talked to the county, and since you've been on the drug task force for the county, our numbers, exactly, compared to Plymouth County in general, have gone down because of your education, your outreach. And I want to thank you very much for that.
When the numbers get to zero, we'll...
There's always room for improvement. Exactly.
Thank you guys for coming in and for the great work.
Mr. Chairman, before I run over to the Conservation Commission, I think the only item that I would have any direct dealing with would be to honor the town administrator's report.
All right, we can take that, that order of order.
Selectmen Brown had asked me about what the options that the town would have, and the board would have for individuals or for anybody reviewing the ZBA decision of May 21st regarding 275 Oak Street. And so the one situation that the board would have is that several years ago, when Pembroke Woods II was approved by the ZBA, it was a situation where Pembroke Woods I hadn't even been constructed yet, but Pembroke, but the ZBA at the time thought that it would be in the best interest of the town that they approve the additional 144 units up there in the industrial park to ensure that the town would be over 10% through the 2010 census. Because of the downturn in the economy, Pembroke Woods II was never constructed, and so we never received credit for 144 units.
Okay.
But that was a situation where the Board of Selectmen then filed an appeal against the ZBA decision. So I just wanted to let the board know that that's certainly an option that the Board of Selectmen have, you know, has right now, you know, as opposed to having the ZBA, you know, receive another petition, you know, for that, for that project. So, anybody have any questions regarding it? If the board wanted to seriously think about that, then that would be reasons for executive session at the next Selectmen's meeting.
So, I've been following this issue myself, as I'm sure everyone else has. The land that belongs to, that is part of the town of Marshfield is privately owned. There are two parcels of land that are on the, we'll call it the Pembroke side of the highway. And these two privately held parcels, it's not the town of Marshfield, privately held parcels, have the ability to have a sign located on that property. And if you were coming down the highway, it would look as if it's in Pembroke.
Right, and I think there's some issue regarding that, because that was Article 38 of the annual town meeting in Marshfield, and it would allow that particular industrial zone, it's called I-1, that includes a little section of the west side of Route 3 in Pembroke. But the article that would allow a billboard such as being proposed at 275 Oak Street, that article was withdrawn. And so right now, it doesn't appear that there's any legal basis for anything like that to be placed in that industrial zone. That's not to say that they wouldn't try and, you know, and/or get a decision that there's ZBA for a use variance in that zone, but that's happened, that's what happened with that article at the Marshfield Town Meeting, that it was withdrawn by the petitioner.
So let's not, let's not get hoodwinked by that article being pulled off the town meeting floor. It was pulled off the town meeting floor for procedural reasons. They needed to change the language, but the same process can be done in the town of Marshfield that's being tried here in Pembroke.
Correct.
Ask for a variance, and they don't need a town meeting vote for that, they just need their ZBA. And their ZBA may be more than willing and more than amenable to approving a variance because it's essentially in land that's surrounded by Pembroke, on the Pembroke side of the highway, and Marshfield would get all of the tax revenue for it. So it's, for the Marshfield folks, it'd be a no-brainer. It's approve a variance, and it's not even essentially in your, in your town, in your sightline, for sure. So we have a, we have a petitioner here that's Pembroke resident, Pembroke business, and we have a state sign law, billboard law, that only allows signs within 1,000 feet of each other. So if the land that's in Marshfield proper, but on our side of the highway, gets a variance, then that cuts out the petitioner that's a Pembroke resident and a Pembroke business, and it cuts out the town of Pembroke from getting the tax revenue for it. And the structure of that tax revenue would be, the billboard itself would be taxed, it'd be taxed, it'd be assessed by the assessors, but above and beyond what the assessors would rate that for taxes, the petitioner and her partners would bump that up, and the number's even gone up since the ZBA hearing, to $50,000 total. So regardless of what the assessment is, the town of Pembroke would be getting $50,000 in taxes every year for a sign that is hundreds of feet, just a couple of hundred feet away from the Marshfield property. So it seems to me we're getting a sign put up there. Do we get a sign put up on the Pembroke side, on Pembroke property, or on Marshfield property? All on the same side of the highway? It makes sense that this variance should be granted for those reasons.
So what do you say, Anna, that it should be granted to Marshfield residents?
It should be granted to the Pembroke business. Our ZBA should reconsider that vote, and there's a, and Ed suggested a way that, Ed suggested a way that this board can appeal that decision so that we can ask them to reconsider. And...
I have to go.
Yep.
And well, because it went without prejudice, too, they could resubmit, and hopefully, like I said, sooner than later, if we contest unanimous decision with our ZBA, we got to make sure these guys get on, that everyone gets on board. Two to one decision, it's got to be unanimous, you know, losing 50 grand out of that, you know, unless they have $50,000 check on them to give us the town, that's an embarrassment to us. That's hurting the town people, saying, hey, guess what? We want more of your money out of your pocket, and this annoys me. And I'm sorry to be upset about this, but I have to be, because one person, we can't get 50 grand, it was 32,000, now 50 grand? I'm appalled by it.
To John's point, and it's a good one, we almost lost Lowe's over one vote some years ago, and we had, it was Jerry Dempsey, who was the new appointee, who took the place of another gentleman and became the vote that made Lowe's happen, and we've gotten substantial tax revenue off of that, obviously, and it's a good business to have right next to a highway. It doesn't bother a lot in the small residential neighborhoods and that kind of thing. So I think if there's going to be a sign there, and there's going to be, there's no question about it, we've discussed it with the advisory committee, that we needed new sources of revenue, new ways to make, you know, $50,000, it's nothing to, you know, nothing to ignore. So I think John is quite right. I think we need to encourage, you know, the ZBA, while they are an independent body, it doesn't mean we can't disagree with them on occasion, so I think we need to express our concern and our wishes that they reconsider and will grant the application.
So for the public's knowledge, just to amplify what John said and what Ed mentioned also, there are two paths for this. So the applicant was denied without prejudice, so they can apply once again for a variance and go through the process one more time. But I think I, as a board member, feel strongly enough that this board should take action and appeal the decision, so that we take a positive affirmative action and we're not sitting back waiting for another hearing to go through. I think it's that important, because there is going to be a sign there, and it should be our sign.
I think we're all in agreement with that, and as Ed mentioned, we'd have to take action on that in executive session.
And before we change business, there are some folks here that are interested in this topic, and I wonder if they wanted to speak here, or if they just wanted us to speak.
Absolutely. Great time for anybody to come up to the microphone.
I just came by to see if you had any questions. Ken's here from Upfront Media, too, so we're just here to provide support. Janet's here to provide support, too, as a business owner, and, yeah, so if you have any questions or concerns, I think between the two of us, we can answer about the property of the Lowe's.
So just from your vantage point, can you just reiterate how close the two properties are, the Pembroke property and the Marshfield property?
Yes, so the two properties are about 490 feet, depending on placement of the structure. One spaces out the other, obviously. The Marshfield billboard is actually, I think it's only about 600 feet away from the residential zoning of the apartment complex of Pembroke Woods. Yeah, so it's much closer, it's potentially visible to that apartment complex, where we're in a depression, we're about 1,100 feet-ish away from that property, and the canopy tree line will block us from any visibility from that complex.
Very good, thank you. So he's just given us one more reason to be strongly in favor of this project being in Pembroke. $50,000, $50,000 in revenue the town will get and protect the citizens. There are over 200 families in Pembroke Woods that are our citizens that we would like to protect from light pollution beyond what the state minimum says.
Very good points. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, you know, kind of what much of the ZBA meeting as well. I'm a business owner in Pembroke, I live in Pembroke. I want what's right for my community, and I try to run my business in that way. Karen has run her business in Pembroke for a very long time, she's a Pembroke resident. She's come up with something that will really benefit the town of Pembroke, and as Arthur said, a sign is going to go in there anyhow. So as a business owner, it's really puzzling to me, if the town, the board selection, the ZBA, the entire town wants to welcome in businesses, this isn't a great way to do it. It has somebody say, essentially, I don't want it here, with really not a lot of reasons why, it doesn't meet the bylaws. That's why, that's why there's variance, that's why variances are granted. And the laws surrounding the billboards are far more strict than our bylaws. So for a ZBA member to have that much power to turn down a Pembroke business that has done nothing but good in this town, it's really puzzling. It doesn't send a message that says, we welcome businesses here. It sends a message that says, we don't need your $50,000. It didn't make any sense to me at all. So if there's any way that you, as the board of selectmen, can encourage the ZBA to reconsider this action and to approve this, it's only going to benefit the town of Pembroke, as well as Karen's business, and it would send a much stronger positive message to encourage other people to join this town's business.
That's very true, and the Board of Selectmen will take action on it.
Bob Marzo, former Selectman, didn't plan on being here for this, but I feel an obligation to this in history. I think it's maybe what Arthur's referring to was the Lowe's situation. I was under board at the time, and I'm not taking a position for against the sign, because I don't have all the facts, but when Lowe's wanted to come to town, it was a three to one vote, two to one vote, and it was turned down. The applicant appealed it, the town took no defense, and the appeal was overturned, and the applicant got their verdict, that's the way it works, so whatever information that is helpful.
Well, actually Jerry Dempsey replaced Howard.
That was afterwards, Jerry was after the whole appeal and all that. Howard, the person on the board of appeals was not reappointed.
That's right, and where there was no contest put up by the town, there was, Jerry was able to vote in favor of it, and it gave us three to zero.
Yeah, I think it was remanded back.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. So I think that concludes our discussion on the ZBA's decision. Thank you all for coming in. So it is now 7:23. We have our public hearing at 7:30. So we will have seven more minutes for the public hearing, for those of you who are here for that.
It has to be done in executive session.
So in the meantime, we'll be addressing the board action items, starting with the preliminary review of candidates for reappointment on June 11th and June 25th, 2018.
These reappointments are on the Selectmen's agenda for April, for June 11th and June 25th. This is just a preliminary review.
Okay, so it does not appear we have a motion at this time. I know I don't have any questions on these individuals. Anybody else? Hearing done, we'll go ahead and move on, but Bill Boelter might come back and have a question or two, so we'll address that a little later on.
He asked his question earlier.
Okay, so he already asked his questions.
He did.
So the next board action item is a vote to approve the minutes of April 23rd, 2018, April 30th, 2018, May 14th, and May 21st, all 2018.
Do you want to do it as a group or individually?
I think we can take that as a group.
Okay, I'd move that we approve the minutes of the meeting, April 23rd, 2018, April 30th, 2018, May 14th, 2018, and May 21st, 2018.
Second.
All righty, you have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye to half, because since I wasn't a Selectman at the time, I can't vote on the first two. So I have to stand for the first two meeting minutes, since I wasn't a board member.
Okay, so I think we should take them all individually, then, in that case. Thank you for reminding us of that.
Just a, just a point of information, as a sitting Selectman, you can vote on minutes, but it's not very prudent to do so. If we're in a bind and needed a quorum vote, then that's a case when it'd be proper.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
You could be listed as present and not voting.
So for the, Arthur, would you be willing to amend?
I would amend the motion to approve the minutes of April 23rd and April 30th, 2018.
Second.
All right, so we have an amended motion to take those two separately. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Two present not voting, and I vote aye as well. Any opposed? Hearing done, this passes three to zero to two.
I would move approval of the minutes of the meeting of May 14th and May 21st, 2018.
Second.
All righty, you have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I vote aye as well, so this motion passes as well, four to zero to one, with our bill present and not voting. It's now 7:27. Sabrina, can we take the public hearing now, or do we have to wait till right at 7:30?
No, we can go right now. I'll just fall in the hallway and make sure there's no one here, but they could be just present.
All righty, so we have a public hearing with Irving Oil Marketing Incorporated for a license application for two underground storage tanks for 32,000 gallons of gasoline, 8,000 gallons of diesel, and this is at 92 Washington Street, D14-8, 83 and 84. Thank you for all coming in tonight for this public hearing. And this site plan has been approved by the planning board, and the special permit has been approved by the ZBA. Good evening.
For the record, Hussein Sivinchik with MHF Design Consultants. We're civil engineers out of Salem, New Hampshire, for Irving Oil. So basically, as you indicated, we have been approved by the planning board and the zoning board. What we're proposing here is a brand new Irving Oil gas station. I can go over the plan a little bit. So it's a 3,200 square foot convenience store with an overhead canopy with five fuel dispensers and underground storage tanks in this location. Off of Washington Street, there will be a full access driveway proposed, off of Group 139, I'm not going to try to say the name.
Skusid Street.
Skusid, okay. My name's difficult, so I don't like to say difficult names. We have a right in, right out driveway located here, and then a two-way driveway located further down. So basically, we're in front of the Board of Selectmen to get approval for the fuel storage that we're proposing on site. So there's two underground, double wall fiberglass fuel storage tanks, state of the art. They will be monitored via a console that's located in the store. There are tank sumps on each compartment, so there's two tanks, four go compartments, 32,000 gallons of gasoline, which is, which would equate to about 24,000 gallons of regular gasoline, and 8,000 gallons of supreme, super. And we have another compartment for 8,000 gallons of diesel. So basically, we filled out the application, we... So basically, we've filled out the application, we've submitted the plans to the fire department and I believe it's here tonight to review the plans. I believe, you know, he's excited for the plans. So we're here in front of you to get approval of the fuel storage license.
All righty, thank you for coming in. Any other Selectmen have a question?
Yes, so I understand you're here for the license of the tank, but this might be the first time the public's had a chance to look at the plans through our video cameras. Could you just give a quick overview of how the traffic will flow even better, some of the Planning Board said, than it does today in that site?
Currently, I believe there are three, there's four total buildings, three of them are one-story retail buildings, one is a two-story retail building. I believe there's multiple driveways along Skusit Street and Washington Street. So we're consolidating those into, like I said, three driveways. There have been traffic studies done and, you know, the public was, I believe, at the Planning Board and zoning Board meetings. These are both mass DOT roadways, so we are going through the mass DOT process and I believe we see, we do have, very well, we see the current transportation of both, both those streets, both governed by the proper transportation. So there were traffic studies prepared and provided to both the town and the state and we did, like Mike mentioned, we did get approval of the driveway permits. So again, we've located the driveways further away from the intersection. This is a right in, right out, no left turns at this driveway and then left turns further away from the intersection. So we have, we have taken the left turns from the site and located them as far away from the intersection as possible.
Thank you. I know that the folks that I've spoken to at the Planning Board have looked favorably on this site, so I just wanted to give you a chance on camera here tonight for some of the folks at home that don't normally make it to the meetings to be introduced to your project.
Yeah, that's a great point. And also I would like to ask, what assurances do, does Pembroke have that these undergrounds, underground storage tanks won't contaminate our environment?
Again, there are double wall fiberglass tanks that are monitored, so there's two fiberglass walls with an interstitial space that's in between the two fiberglass walls of this tank. There's a brine solution within the tank that is constantly monitored. So the tank, on top of the tank, there's a reservoir that has a sensor within the reservoir that is constantly monitored through the store. So if there's any discrepancy, any either increase or loss of interstitial fluid between the tanks, the alarm would go off and, you know, the proper authorities would be contacted. But again, these are double wall fiberglass tanks, they're state of the art. In the past, there were single wall steel tanks that corroded that were used. Single wall fiberglass was used for quite a while. Double wall steel tanks were also used, but these are double wall fiberglass. They have, they have a good, a pretty good track record throughout the US.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how you're going to, I guess, level that area off, because on 139, 53, that's a huge steep driveway going up there where the jewelry store is now. I'm just wondering how that's going to be all leveled, because I mean, that's a big massive property right now that you bought several parcels. So I'm just wondering how that's going to...
Right, so there's a combination of grading out, grading out the site, so from this driveway to this driveway, there is a grade difference. So you would be coming up, the canopy would be sloping up as well.
Okay.
Kind of meet the existing grades over here. There are retaining walls proposed around this, in this area and along this part of Skusit Street. So there are retaining walls, grading to get the grades to work. So we designed the site to have acceptable grades, so some sites you'll see like eight to 10 percent. These are all within the 5 percent range, which is a common engineering practice.
Any other questions from the Board?
If you'll accept the motion, I'm ready. Oh, yes.
Has anybody from the public have any questions? Aye, hearing none, who will accept the motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of Irving Oil Marketing LLC for a license to store 32,000 gallons of gasoline and 8,000 gallons of diesel underground at 223 Church Street, MAP G15, Lot 32, by installing two new underground storage tanks, UST.
Second.
All righty, you have a motion and a second, all is in favor?
Can you hold one moment?
You're holding one moment.
This is on me. That should be there.
Could I just make, amend that motion, Mr. Chairman, to read 92 Washington Street, parcel ID number D14-8, 83 and 84.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on an amended motion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I vote aye as well, this passes four to zero to one with one abstention. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was an easy one for you.
Happy birthday, Arthur.
Thank you. I know it's over 60, go ahead. We'll make up for it somehow.
All righty, typically at this time, we move on to old business. However, with the number of people in the crowd tonight, I'd like to take as the Selectmen out of order to see if anybody has anything under as the Selectmen.
Hey, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you need a background? Do you need background members?
Sure.
There was an automobile accident at the intersection of Plain Street and Lake Street last week on a Wednesday at 2:49 in the afternoon. And we have, in the past, the Board of Selectmen has appealed to Old Colony Planning Council to review traffic data, crash statistics, do a traffic count, and send that information into Mass DOT. And in the last 18 months, that intersection was rejected for a four-way stop as the Board requested. So with the current data on file, it did not meet the standard. With the crash on Wednesday, some of the residents came into the office and asked if there was anything they could do to help or anything that could be done. The town administrator got on the phone to the DPW director to have him go clear that line of sight with the vegetation that had grown up in the spring, see if they could implement some of the stuff that Mass DOT said we could do, which was get rid of the vegetation that causes an obstruction to the sight line. But perhaps the new crash could alter the data, maybe it makes sense to have the conversation to appeal to Old Colony Planning Council again. And the residents are here to talk to the Board about that.
All righty, thank you for that background.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Ignacio, I live in the 58 Plain Street, I've been there 18 years. Obviously, I don't have the police record, but I've been there, so I know exactly how often those occur.
Are you right on the corner?
That's right. Well, not the corner, it's the second house going to Lake.
Going back towards, to the doors of his house.
Yes. So it's towards, so the intersection is between, the other way. The other way.
Come up Lake Street and take a left onto Plain.
All right.
He's the second household, and there's a lot of trees right there. When you go up on Lake Street, you're trying to look down.
Yeah, you're kind of preaching to the choir here.
In a circle, look down there. I don't know if those trees are on private property or on...
So what I think is going on here, just those statistics that you've mentioned, those are statistics, but they're probably not acknowledging all the facts. Facts are not just measured by the accidents, but like objectively, that you have to be there and see what's going on. There's low visibility, zero visibility, because the vegetation is there. So it's populated by kids going from middle school, high school, Silver Lake. So that's a huge risk to me. There's a lot of speed going to Lake, because they don't see anything that will stop them in a straight shot. They go, instead of 35, go 45, 50. The person coming from Lake to Silver Lake or middle school or turning to my street, Lake, they cannot stop on the line of the stop. They can't because they have zero visibility. They have to start shooting a little bit to be able to have visibility. As they do that, they get hit by a car coming 45, 50. So we're talking about kids, we're talking about safety issue. It might be indicated by these statistics, but not thoroughly. So maybe the four stop intersections may be rejected by the state, but they are not, I don't think they are aware of these issues, the visibility. So you have absolutely zero visibility, so you can't really see what's going on. And once again, there are three schools within a mile. I know that they're at least between Memorial Day weekend and Labor Day weekend every year, 10 to 12 car accidents. Luckily now, now he has died, but it could happen.
Last year, there was four within like four weeks, the end of, the end of spring and the summer, four. And that has been done. What can be done? Can there be a four-way stop put up there? Can there be a light put up there?
Flashing light?
It's dangerous. You wouldn't believe it, you sat in some of the driveways, we're four houses behind the Country Corner store, you sat in our driveways, you would not believe how fast the cars go down there. And we all have kids, grandchildren, whoever, I mean, whoever it might be, what's the take of fatality for somebody to do something about it? It's bad up there.
That's right. They see the sign, the 35, but once again, it's a straight shot. They have no reason to go 35, because they don't see a flashing light, there's not a stop, it's a free invitation to go 45, 50, which is sometimes it's okay, because they can manage, they can, they're looking. The person who is at the stop can't see what's going on, but the time they make a decision, they're in the middle of the road at the mercy. I'm actually surprised that my kids are, well, they're probably, they're really aware of what's going on, but to me, I'm risking my life and everybody who's there is risking their lives 10 times more than everybody else. And once again, we're not the only ones. There are three schools, elementary school, middle school, Silver Lake, right within a mile, really, really risky for novelty of the drivers. So those facts might be missing from the application of the four-way intersection, I mean, four-way stop or flashing light or something.
So this Board did recognize that there's an issue up there, an ongoing issue, and we petitioned the state for a four-wheel, four-way stop 18 months ago, I believe it was, and the numbers didn't hold up from the state. We can't, we can't as a, we can't as a town put up a four-wheel, four-way stop. We don't have permission, we need the state to grant us permission to do that. But since this accident and from what you're asking and presenting here tonight, we can ask again. Matter of fact, the entity that you petitioned first is the Old Colony Planning Council, our regional planning agency. And I'm going to be at that meeting tomorrow, so I can personally present it tomorrow and speak to those people on a personal note, and this Board can have our town administrator write a formal letter to back that up. And we'll ask them to do another study and it has to, it's, I know it's slow, but that's how the state works. They have to do another study, they put the strips in the road, do the counters and find out how fast they're going, how many cars are going by. This new accident will go on the ledger from the police reports, so that will add to it. And we could even get citizens, a citizen's petition or a brief letter or an email will be enough to be supported back up to our letter, so that the state can see that it's, as you say, more than just a bunch of numbers, there's more to it than just that.
It requires site inspection, because that would bring the magnet to a deep risk, not just the numbers. And once again, the numbers indicate it, but the numbers are random. And I think a site inspection of whoever's is doing that assessment, it'll be required to me to get a fully understanding of the issue, not just looking at the numbers in the paper. Once again, thank to God, you know, nothing has happened. I think two years ago, there was a sign in front of my yard, we were joking, my wife and I, because it was just a cross, yellow sign with a cross, nothing else. And I thought, well, we are the holy week now, we're the holy family now. That, incidentally, that sign got blown by a car. It was just a half of the sign went in my yard and that was gone. I still have the half of the sign by its feet. So that sign, we didn't really do a trick, but disappeared.
Shows people that there's an intersection coming by. Maybe we can have the DPW take a look at that and put that back up. So speaking of the DPW, after the accident, and you folks had called Town Hall, the town administrator asked the DPW to go right out to the intersection, cut back some brush. Was that done?
After the accident last week?
Yeah.
No, I don't know where. I was up here this morning and it looks the same to me, like you said. I'm not a quarter of the way into the, into one lane, but pretty close, just to be able to see by. But I looked at the tree, it really blocks it. I'm going to say it's about eight to 10 feet off the edge of the road. So I don't know if that's town property.
I think it's town property, but anyway, that sign that it was in my yard, I didn't really complain at all, because I thought, you know, anything that do, it look awful, but you know, everything they do prevent any accidents, welcome, even though it looks awful to my property, but I was happy with that until somebody took it by speed. But that sign actually reminded me that one of those signs, just to give you an example, the signs that you see on the highway where you say, "Be careful where the above wires", I mean, the wires are right there.
Yeah.
How good that do? That doesn't do any good, because they're telling you, there's a wire right there, somebody's driving, it's already passed. The person driving in my street is already 50. That sign 50 feet from the intersection, that's too late. That's too late. It's better than nothing, but when I saw it there, I said, "Okay, I'm not going to win it." So I understand the concern, I think the concern in town, but I think the measures are not matching the risk, especially with three schools around. And a clear shot in that, I mean, that street that goes to Route 27, straight. So people don't feel the danger to slow down to go 30, 35. Why? I don't have a stop, I don't have a light, I don't have anything. 50.
Are you saying there needs to be a certain amount of accidents before anybody does anything about anything?
It's a combination of the traffic volume, speed, and accidents, because there's a thought up at the state and the Department of Transportation that a four-wheel, four-way stop is, has a danger to itself, it's not always the best case. So they, they look into it greatly before they allow four-way stop.
I understand there's a concern on the traffic, because you say, once again, there's schools there, so slowing down much traffic will be tough, but you know, it's not a four-way stop, maybe a flashing light where indicate clearly the dangers intersection or dangerous intersectional sign. I think there, this, it has, it doesn't have to be four-way direction, they have all the things.
Need more controls.
Yeah.
So definitely options we'll look into, if there are more signs and a flashing light.
And Gene can come in next week if you want to try to schedule him to report on what signs are there and what signs are going and what signs are needed.
Sure.
It's not a bad idea.
Okay.
Yeah, this gentleman's got a question.
In a little of a four-way intersection where it's been, what, would you say 18 months ago?
18 months.
You looked into this? That would be the ultimate, that would do that, but on, my wife and I, when we go on vacations, we go to Maine, and there's a, up in Bayberry, Maine, Mexico, Maine, which is, which is kind of a depressed area, but they have a similar situation, four-way intersection, but a hill on the right-hand side. You can't see anything coming from the right, you can't see anything coming from the left. So instead of, instead of making a four-way intersection, what they did is, say we were coming up Lake Street, to Plain, on the far side, they had a sign and it was illuminated, lit by solar, and it would have picture of a car on each side, on the one side, and it'd be flashing if there was a car coming from the left, flashing if it was coming from the right. And I'm telling you, it might have been three years ago they put this sign up. You know, one time it wasn't flashing and I said, "Boy, I don't know if it's working, I'm not going to, I'm not going to move." But within a minute or so, no flash, so I went out, sure enough, no cars coming. But every other time I've been up there, it's been flashing from the left, from the left or the right, or from both, and made it much more safer. the left or the right, or from both, and made it much more safer at this intersection. You know, I don't have anything to say how many accidents they had, but we lived on Plain Street forty-some odd years and I was involved in an accident right at that intersection. I drove an oil truck and a, and a young lady with a little kid coming right through that stop sign and plowed right into, right into the, right into, right into the oil truck.
That was the Wednesday accident. The person went right through the stop sign.
Yeah.
And that's the other thing, the stop is on the right side, so it kind of like a depiction of the, the street, the street kind of open up, right? The, the line of the stop is way inside. If you stop right there, like the police will tell you, you have so little visibility, you gotta, you gotta go in. I always say that. But also, the stop is way on your right side. When the sun is hitting you on the face, sometimes you don't see it. Honestly, you can't see it. Or if it's dark at night, there's no flashing lights or anything in the stop, you don't see it. So, I see it because I live there, but I can't understand someone who's not familiar with that, depending on the day, when the sun is hitting you in the face, or at night, you might not be able to see it. And when somebody's coming fifty, fifty miles per hour there, it's pretty dangerous.
I think fifty miles an hour is a little excessive to be on Plain Street or on Lake Street.
No. No, but if someone, someone doesn't have visibility and is trying to go in, 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 and leave the car in the middle.
Oh, yeah. I, I drive up to there at least once a week and it's, you're taking your life in your hands and I, I agree with you that you need to do something before there's a reason for, you know, as a, as a fatality or something. You know, Dan can carry the message for us back to the Old Colony Planning Council and have them take another look at it because it, it is something that should be a four-way stop, in my opinion. I'm not a traffic expert, but I, I'm realistic enough to know that, you know, that's a dangerous road, dangerous intersection, so.
Now, you said something was done eighteen months ago. What, what was that again?
The, the, the traffic study.
Traffic study?
This traffic study, the, the, so, they, they took the count of the cars going by, the speed of the cars going by at various times of the day. You know, it's, it's those tubes that go across the ground, you might, you might run over them every now and then, and maybe not just our town, but every town, that's how it's down the counters.
I've never seen any, but, and we sit out on a driveway a lot and we see we'll go these cars. You, you couldn't, I wish you could sit there someday and watch the cars go by. It's terrible.
You can, come on now.
I still wonder where that sign.
Like my driveway, wouldn't it?
I still wonder where that sign went, you know? I know half of where it is, it's in my yard, but I still, I still keep it as a souvenir, but I wonder where that sign.
Why they think it's a speedway street because it's, it's got, I mean, a lot of its woods and it's hard, it's just horrible.
Yeah. They really have. Gil Martin's my name. We live further up Plain Street towards Valley. And I can think of a couple of things that would help the situation. I, I don't live close enough to have personally experienced the problem at the corner, although it's a serious problem. But when they can buy our house, leaving Valley Street usually, a lot of times, especially on Friday, Saturday night, they go on eighty by the time they get to our house, which is probably two hundred yards. And the couple of things I've noticed is police presence is a minimum. I, I realize there's no place for them to park down there and be concealed so that as soon as somebody comes down to the end of Valley Street and makes the corner, they normally park on the Newport Avenue, which is directly across the street from my house. They're visible as soon as the guy gets here, so they don't goose it, they just take off like you or I would take off. Second thing is, to my knowledge, the only speed limit sign I've seen is at the end of Plain Street by Forest and Pelham. So, if someone comes out of Valley, there's nothing there to tell them, remind them that this is a residential zone and the speed limit is thirty-five. If we had a sign immediately at the end of Valley Street, I think that would help immensely. And the third thing I think would definitely contribute would be one of those flashing signs that says you're going forty, or fifty, or thirty-five mile an hour zone. When somebody sees that, human nature tells you, I better slow down. But the also, the, the other thing I think human nature helps a lot is, firstly speaking, if I go by the Havelock Arena on my way to center town, I always think of a police cop on the right-hand side, parked in there by the rink, and I always think of when I go by, there's another place in town too I can't think of. But if, if, if you're there four, five, six, seven times and somebody driving by sees you, they're gonna remember when I come around that corner or something, maybe a cop up here, and I think that helps. So, police presence, another stop sign, and maybe one of those flashing radar signs would help the problem, I think, at the corner.
Those are great suggestions, though. Do you have another comment in the audience?
So, just a question, I'm not, I don't go through that intersection too often, so like call me out if you're totally wrong on this. When you're coming down Lake Street towards Plain Street, it kind of like gets wider until it's basically two lanes. So, if you're on the right side, you can turn right. If you're in the middle, left side, whatever, you can go straight forward. When you're on the right side, there's no visibility coming from the left, so you're gonna have to keep, yeah, so you have to keep inching forward and that's super scary because, like you said, by the time you're out there, you can already get hit. One really simple solution to at least pile it with traffic cones might just be to get rid of that, make it one lane. That's gonna be frustrating for people turning right, but it would make it a lot safer. I know that in slightly denser areas, a little farther north of us, they've been experimenting with a lot of that, making intersections more narrow so the curve is less of like a wide angle. Because right now, it's basically the shape of a highway on, right? You can just turn right and keep going without slowing down at all. When you make it more narrow, even if there's no cars waiting, you have to slow down in order to make the right turn because you can't make that like whip around the corner. So, maybe, is Pembroke allowed to just test it out? Put traffic cones basically in a right angle shape, just far enough that people can make the right turn without like, you know what I mean? And just see if that fixes it at all, makes like a traffic calming measure? Just an idea. You know what I'm like saying, though?
I do. I do, sure.
How about a turnabout? Turnabout.
Another roundabout.
School, it's real buses, it doesn't go.
I mean, they're putting, in other places in Pembroke, in other towns, a round, a roundabout, I mean, I, I don't get it. Why can't something be done? If there's been four accidents last year and now one, we're already slapping into the summer. There was one last week.
Well, so, so the state looked at it and said no, but that doesn't mean we have to take no for an answer. We can, we can have another conversation with them, starting with the, with our regional planning agency, and see what, see what we can implement on our own, whether it's some sort of signage, police presence is something that we can speak to the chief about.
They can park them, my driveway.
Country corner, country corner.
Right.
In the country corner, they can stop there, right?
Yeah, the speed limit flashing sign.
By the time they get there, they're slowing down.
They stand way up at the beginning of Plain Street and come flying down, and they're flying, they're flying. And I sit there and I wait and they don't stop, and you can hear them go right on onto Route twenty-seven and you just, and you say, oh my God, they're gonna get hit. It, it's just an, it's just, it's just a straight road that goes right down and they don't stop, they just fly.
You can hear the exhaust, like a motorcycle or a boost-up car, when they're slowing down, ah, like that, when they get near the corner.
Yeah.
And then on the other side, on twenty-seven.
And it's not thirty, forty miles an hour, they're gone, they're gone.
And this happens, did, what she, what she said, it happens, I won't say weekly, it's, it's, I don't say daily, that you sit there and you're going, okay, you're gonna hear the crash, you're gonna hear it. Is it happening? I mean, do you have any number, you know, when they said that the state, the number of crashes?
Yeah, so what we could do is, if you could leave your information with Sabrina, we'll, we'll give you the whole report. It's, it's public information, so we'll, we'll get a copy over to you, either paper or email, whatever you like best.
But that, that's why I was trying, when I started talking, was saying this, it's not just the one issue, speed. Speed, poor visibility, and the risk of the schools around with young, young people driving around.
Right.
Those are the three things. If it's a speed issue, that could be handled. If it's a visibility issue, by itself, that could be handled. If it's a school, some dangerous area, that, it's the three, it's the three factor combination, you know? And I understand that they're having traffic from school, it makes things seem to be harder to fix. If you can't put, I mean, you're gonna put a rotary there, the bus is gonna go cuckoo.
Yeah, there's probably not enough room realistically for a roundabout.
Exactly, so I understand the magnet, but the thing is just that we gotta do something because I work from, um, on Wednesdays, from May to September, this, every week is at least one, what is it? So, it's just too much.
We've had two accidents in the mid, we've been trying to mid Plain Street. One hit a telephone pole and another one hit down Fire Hydrant, went way into a house. They're going too fast and something's gotta be done. There's little kids that ride bicycles down there all the time.
Right.
I was out in the yard last week and I heard that crash and I just went, was there any? When you hear that crash, it's a sign you don't wanna hear. Automatically you think, is it one of your loved ones that's out there in the car? Is it one, somebody you know that got hit or got in the accident? It's just, it's just, it's terrible up there. No, but something's gotta be done.
Yeah, and it's, it's important for us to, to hear this from, from the public because, you know, we've done the study on it, the state came back with the information and, you know, we're looking at it, all right, we did our due diligence. But to hear it from the folks that, that live it every day, that, that's what we need to, to know because we're, we're taking it from so-called transportation experts, but they're not people experts. You know, they, they don't get into the mind of the folks that are driving through stop signs and, and how can you avoid, they, they just think logically like an engineer. Well, there's a stop sign there, why wouldn't someone stop for it? And they don't factor in the, the human factor as much as they should.
No workplace, the stop sign, you say, is no workplace. No workplace for someone who is not really paying attention. And unfortunately, there are many of those, there are many of those. The sign is placed way on the right side and people, they can tell you in the middle of the day or night, they don't see it, they don't see it, they're not familiar. I have my own trip because I've been there for fifteen years. I know how to go through the intersection, we pretty much place free. You're gonna have to stop, you're gonna slow down a lot and watch left and right and pray.
So, there's, there's a sign, there's an intersection of Elm and Taylor Street where they put a sign, you know, probably about thirty, forty yards before the, the intersection, stop ahead. And it, it really worked out well because when you're coming from the Duxbury side, you, you don't see that stop sign until it's, it's almost too late, just like yours. So, that's something we'll, we'll look into as well.
So, if that was done there, why can't, are there more accidents over there?
There was because that, that one was turned into a four-way stop sign about five years ago or so, went through this whole process, and the state said, yes, that this, this one requires a four-way stop.
Why would we reject it?
They, they have a certain amount of criteria and so, some engineer with the pocket protector said, no, not this one.
Really? Kansas has a great stop sign. I'm gonna date going down by where.
I Saint Joseph's Church.
Yes. At the John Sullivan funeral, and that sign plinks all the time and you stop.
Right.
You stop because it's confusing as to which way to go, actually.
Well, I agree, yes, but you still don't miss that stop sign and something, yeah, it's not a good decision.
Well, we can go to the police chief, as Dan pointed out, and ask him to get the flashing sign up there and, you know, call some attention to it and the signage should be an issue that we can settle with the DPW.
How about speed limit signs?
That's, that's the flashing sign you meant, the speed limit, the trailer sign?
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the, the trailer, uh, 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 speed trap sign. That's, and if, and if the chief could find someone that'll let him, let him, put him in the park driveway, it'd be helpful.
How about a stationary speed limit?
What's your name, what's your address?
Is that stayed like the, like the stop sign or?
Well, it's, it's, it's temporary. He, he'll tow it, he'll tow it over there, leave it there for a week or so. But in the meantime, we'll look into other avenues, but that, that's a good start. That can be implemented right away.
I've got quite a bit of room off the street, too. It's clean, it's stone, you could put it right there.
I'd love to see more police along the Martin Street, but, because you can't leave.
We were standing joke that a, a police officer sat there on a Friday or Saturday night of your week and pay his salary for the year.
And now it's getting busier because it's getting summertime and that's the main way, Plain Street is the main way to go to Duxbury Beach. Traffic's gonna get even heavier and worse.
And there are three schools in a mile, it's a conference there, so that, that's something that the station knows, too. Young guys driving around, you know, I shouldn't say that because most of the accidents that I have present have been a, a halt, yeah, all the hulks.
I know, I almost was in an accident and I was coming off of Valley Street and I had a wedge out a little bit and everything looked clear because there was vegetation there and I, I wedged out a little bit, ready to go, and boom, a pack come whipping down. And, I mean, they go by so fast that they're on top of you before you even know it, you know? It was clear when I was looking. And there wasn't a fatality on that then years ago, but most of them.
Yeah, it's, it's important for us to know this firsthand, but it, it, make sure Sabrina has your information so as, for two things. So, as, as we do start to work toward this, you can be informed. And secondly, if you're not seeing, if you're not seeing it, it's time to give us a little kick in the rear. Let's go, guys. Get it done.
Believe it or not, I did tell a lot more people.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened. I told a lot and they were real concerned. The one neighbor said that he did complain a couple of years ago and he said something to the fact to get into the police records or anything, you would have to pay, pay thousands of dollars to find out anything. So, he dropped, he dropped it.
Does Dan, you like?
Give us a minute. Yes, yes, so it, it, I think there was a little bit of misinformation. Hopefully, they just, someone gave, he didn't understand or someone gave them the wrong information, that doesn't, that doesn't sound right. But you're here and it doesn't take your whole neighborhood to, to make us get into action. Just a couple of folks or a phone call to us or an email to us, that's all we really need because, because I don't, I don't know. We, we thought we did our due diligence, but it, it's not enough. We need to do more.
Yeah, that's certainly true. We do hear you. We, we, we'll work to make things better in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Dan, is there other avenues we can take besides Old Colony or having our representation, either have a letter to Old Colony or to Mass DOT to help us out with this?
We'll do both. Uh, Old Colony is, is a liaison for us.
Yeah, I don't wanna step up.
So, the DOT?
Yeah.
But the DOT be copied.
Okay.
So, we have concerns and what we'll wanna know is, what can we do on our own without, without the state? And, you know, then we could also ask the, the state to, to relook at the, the intersection, the four-way stop sign. And they don't, the state doesn't do it themselves, the regional planning agency does it. So, there's, there's an intermediary there and that's the Old Colony Planning Council.
But even our representation can't ask, it's imperative because of how the intersection's brought up. I mean, even when I brought it up too, when I, after the accident, after signing stuff for us, I actually went to the intersection and see what was going on and I'm like, yeah, it's, it's dangerous, it's dangerous.
Right.
You know, just personally for me, from my point of view. And like I said, I have a little one, and not so little anymore, but, you know, it would be in my car and I won't be able to take that and these guys deal with it every day.
So.
So, I'm wondering if, like I said, if, like I said, Josh Cutler or Vinnie could do something for Mass DOT also, or, you know, our liaison, say, this is imperative because the Board of Select in Pembroke asked us to bring this forth to, to look at due diligence and to make sure that we can get this done for these people.
Right. So, so let's, let's look at it with fresh eyes from the original report.
Okay.
Start, start there and, and then have the conversation. And tomorrow night, Ed and I have a meeting with the Old Colony Planning Council, so it's, uh, we'll have the initial conversation tomorrow. tomorrow. We'll, we'll have that conversation, and, and then we'll get our representation involved if we're not getting the answer we like.
Yeah, I mean, it took forever to Pleasant Street and Washington Street, so we have a head start on this one.
Right.
Soon enough, though, right?
It's coming, did they open the bid yet, Pleasant and Washington?
You know what, I don't know.
Was it last Thursday?
Yeah, I think it was.
All right, so we have a good plan for that, and I think we'll get it, get the ball rolling very soon. Go ahead and move on to old business. And the first item on this is a record of approved bills and payrolls of May 30th, 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Sabrina, is this one the bill signs?
No.
The one that John signs.
The one that Mr. Brown signs.
All right.
Because I believe Mr. Bolt had tried to, and they said, "No."
Would you like to read that on this day and personally review?
Yes.
I am pleased to report.
I am pleased to report, on May 30th, 2018, I personally reviewed seven accounts payable warrants totaling $329,599.60, and two payroll warrants totaling $1,299,780.84 prepared by the town accountant and authorized the itemized expenditures for payment.
Motion to accept the report?
Second.
All right, I give the motion in a second, all of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I vote aye as well, so that passes for zero to one, bill abstaining. So, the other thing I wanted to talk about under old business was I attended the annual county meeting last Thursday, and I'm pleased to report back, the usual business occurred with us approving the budget for the county. And the one item of note that was a little different than the usual business was a property was sold in Plymouth, and two properties are gonna be bought, are approved to be bought in Plymouth as well, to give the county access to a, a lot of land. If anybody has any questions, please let me know, I've attended. Does anybody else have anything under old business? Hearing none, go ahead and move on to ask the selectmen. Ain't no additional items under that, move on to new business.
I have something, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I was seeing, going through the capital bond bill that was going through the House, House 45, 49, that the $3 million that Vinnie Dimiceto put in in the Senate budget went through conference, and I believe it, from my knowledge of reading it, because sometimes the bills on Beacon Hill are kind of difficult to read at times, I believe it did pass, and the $3 million, we're not sure when we'll be getting it, but if we're able to remind them that we did put this money in for a bond bill for construction of public safety design and construction for our police and fire, try to get that, get the ball rolling sooner than later. So we might not get it, you know, like, not tomorrow, of course, it could be five years down the road for the bonding bill, but not make sure it's 20 like we did with the New 14 project. Just kind of, we have to kind of keep on them to make sure that we're getting our money for our police and fire. So, I mean, that just came up to my knowledge as of today, so I'm hoping that, you know, our town can actually move forward with that.
Dan, that's a great idea. If you'd like, we can drop the letter.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All righty, so that was a great end of under new business. Go ahead and move on to upcoming issues. On June 11th and 25th, the annual reappointments that were mentioned tonight will take place. On June 11th at 7:00 PM, Robert Mann, Designated Business Association of Dr. Volks.com, will be in for a Class II used license dealers, used license to be exercised at 111 High Street. On June 11th as well, at 7:15, the school committee will be in for a discussion regarding the fiscal year 2018 budgeting process. Also on June 11th, at 7:45, the town accountants will be in with a recommendation on the fall special town meeting plan. A lot happening on June 11th. On June 18th, the summer schedule begins, in which the selectmen will be meeting every other week. And lastly, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board of selectmen is June 11th, 2018.
May I suggest we take a five-minute recess to see if Mr. Bolter and Mr. Thorne come back from the conservation hearing? Because we've got something for executive session, I believe, don't we?
It's not posted. Look it for you.
Okay. You don't have to talk me into it.
I just may have found on the agenda, I'm sorry.